Call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. It is March 12, 2013. It is a work session of the North Kingstown School Committee. We apologize for our slight delay in getting started. If everyone could stand so we can say the pledge allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible). One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lorraine, when you're ready, could you call the roll? Linda Avanzano.
Here.
John Biscardis.
Here.
Larry Cerisi.
Here.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Here.
Robert Jones.
Here.
William Mudge.
Here.
Kimberly Page.
Here.
Julia Held. Thank you. Lorraine, could you go ahead and do the calendars? March 13, 8:00 AM, Budget Subcommittee Meeting, Central Administration Building. March 26, 7:00 PM, School Committee Business Meeting, North Kingstown High School. March 29, Good Friday, Schools and Offices Closed. April 8, 7:00 PM, Town Council Preliminary Budget Hearing for School Fund. April 9, 7:00 PM, School Committee Work Session, North Kingstown High School. Thank you. Yes, if everybody didn't get that message, you need to add April 8 to your calendar. It's a Monday, and we're going to be meeting with the Town Council to discuss our budget. That'll be, as Lorraine said, at the high school.
Actually, we're not sure yet. It depends. It's either going to be at the senior center or the high school.
Okay.
April 8?
Yes, Monday, April 8. Great. Dr. Ojai, do you have any presentations or recognitions?
Yes, you know, it seems like every March, we get a lot of really wonderful news about North Kingstown, and it's worth just spending a few moments to talk about. Just, you know, in this weekend alone, we had a major performance of Guys and Dolls that included over 100 students at the high school. It was a huge success. Our boys' basketball team was in the state championship. Our boys' hockey team was in the state semifinals, and our girls' hockey was in the quarterfinals in the past week. We have, in the past couple of weeks, Justin Zarambi won his weight class in state wrestling. The girls' gymnastics team won a state championship. The North Kingstown swimmers, Boris Pardo-Litici, was first in the state in 100-meter freestyle, and the Rhode Island Male Swimmer of the Year. Our girls' swim team came in second in the state. We have a team that won four individual medals at the academic decathlon, and we have Stephen Landry, a student in the 5th grade at Hamilton Elementary School, who won the Rhode Island Spelling Bee, and will be going to the national competition for the spelling bee. That's a wonderful thing. On top of all these wonderful things that our kids have accomplished, you know, this is the month where our links organization had their ladies' night out, a huge fundraiser for, you know, programming in the district, and the Booster Club has their banquet on March 24th. And again, those two organizations bring in so much and add so much to our school community. So, you know, it's a good time of year to kind of recognize all of that extracurricular work coming together, and, you know, the fabulous things that our kids are doing. Last month, we talked about the test scores in this district and how they're moving in the right direction, and they've been high for several years on top of that. Well, the extracurricular programming is as good as it gets in North Kingstown as well, and I just, you know, couldn't help but reflect on that this weekend as I was waiting in line for Guys and Dolls and watching through the faculty dining room wall to see the boys' basketball team on TV and getting reports on my cellphone about the hockey game going on. So, it was quite the week.
And have we said anything here about the U.S. Healthier School Challenge, the bronze award that five of our schools won? Not yet.
I didn't mention that. Trish Colley, the head of our cafeteria program, filed for a federal program and was recognized with all of our elementary schools for this bronze medal, and USDA's Healthier U.S. Schools Challenge bronze award for five elementary schools. So, again, just one more item to brag about here in North Kingstown.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have any other things that we need to brag about? Linda?
Just to add on, we discussed that bronze award at the last wellness meeting, and Trish said that each elementary school will be getting some funding as a result, as a prize, and that we're going to talk about how to use that funding to benefit each of the schools with nutrition and activity in some way. We haven't decided yet, but we'll report back to the committee when we do.
Right.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us to citizens' comments. We have four citizens who have signed up, so I'll take you in order. The first one is Matt Leonard, our new audit committee rep.
Good evening. My name's Matt Leonard. I live at 71 Wapinaw Circle. I am your sole representative to the audit committee, and I wanted to come and just talk to you about what's been going on. I don't speak for any other members of the audit committee or the audit committee as a whole, but I did want to let this committee know that we did receive the management letter from LGCD Audit and Firm. That's the new audit firm that the town hired to take a look at the town's financial statements. Along, that obviously includes the school department as well. And I'm delighted to report to the members of the school committee that there were no significant findings, no material weaknesses, on the school department side. However, there were significant deficiencies on the town side, which will affect the -- which did affect the school department. You know, the school department, as you all know, their finances, your finances have been held under the lens of a microscope for many years, and I think this is a terrific report. We've had so many special audits, special procedure audits have been done on the school department, so I think it's a job well done. You've come a long way to where we are. The town finance director is also leaving. Her last day is Friday, so this is going to obviously put additional challenges on the school department as well because so much of the finances are down in the town with money transfers and posting and things of that nature. So, I'm also recommending to the school committee that you request the management letter if you've not received it, and review those significant discrepancies and seek to get some resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Anna Pinkleton. Sorry about that.
Hi, my name's Anna Pinkington. I live at 560 Potteroe. Members of the school committee, approximately 70 days left in the school year, Mrs. Carney at Quenessa Elementary School was transferred to another school. The parents of Mrs. Carney's class received notification of this event until after she was transferred and when the children returned home from school. The parents normally were greeted by happy children, but were instead greeted by crying, upset children at the end of the day. The school sent home paperwork, one from the principal saying that we had a new teacher, and one from the teacher introducing herself. The letter contained no explanation of what happened or why the transfer had occurred. Upon contacting both the principal and the superintendent, we only received the explanation that it was a personal matter and in the best interest of our children. The parents now have children who don't want to go to school and who do not want to discuss their day because they are upset. We have children who normally chat about their day and now will not respond. When we had Mrs. Carney, they would recount their whole day, and they would tell us everything they had done. Mrs. Carney was a wonderful teacher, and after the first week of school, she contacted the parents personally and let us know how they did, realizing that kindergarten was difficult for the children. Mrs. Carney would contact us if there were any troubles in school. Mrs. Carney would go out of her way to make sure the children had everything they needed. Mrs. Carney would check with the parents if a child did not act correctly during school, wondering if there was something wrong. Mrs. Carney sent home books every week for reading and along with sight words for us to memorize with the children. Mrs. Carney was always prompt to any questions we had about our children. If the school had problems with their teacher, how come the transfer took so long? Why did the school not contact the parents of the class and get feedback from all of the parents? Did the school department observe Mrs. Carney, and how many times did they? Did the school department get a complaint from one parent, many parents, or any? If they invested a year in implants, did they take one parent's ward or observation? Why couldn't the school department have Mrs. Carney have a co-teacher in the class to avoid this traumatic event on our teacher? Why is this reading and language arts specialist looking at our children? Are they testing all the kids at Quenessa, or are they just testing Mrs. Carney's or just all the kindergarten? If our children are below expected levels, why haven't the parents been told? How does the school decide what is best for our children without even consulting the children? We feel that the transfer of Mrs. Carney should be investigated, and the parents deserve more than an answer than it is personal. We feel that it was handled in a poorly and unprofessional manner. It is personal because it is affecting our children every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse and Megan Larkin?
Jesse and Megan Larkin, 18 Pilgrim Drive. We would also like to speak on behalf of Amy Carney, our son's teacher who was involuntarily transferred. It's not so much the transfer for us as the way in which it was handled. We chose North Kingstown based solely on its school system. We could have lived pretty much anywhere, and seeing how things are handled in this manner has given me some concern. The way in which this transfer was carried out was confusing, but most of all extremely unprofessional. You know, I would have expected some sort of meeting, or you'll have to excuse me, my public speaking is a little off, but I would have expected a meeting and not a bake sale flyer. You know, we received, you know, we basically received a piece of paper on Monday afternoon saying that on Friday an involuntary transfer had taken place and with no information whatsoever, none. And the principal has been less than helpful and has not given us pretty much the time of day, no returned information, no returned calls. And basically, I wouldn't be standing here in front of you tonight if I didn't feel as if she was an absolutely fantastic teacher. Our son's progressing very well. I'm not going to talk for or speak for anyone else, though I have consulted with other parents, and, you know, they seem to be of the same opinion. Many of them work nights, they can't be here this evening to say the same. But as I said, it's not so much the transfer. I understand some things need to be done, but there was definitely no warning, and she has an open-door policy. You know, you could go into her classroom at any time, which both Megan and I had done, and never had any concern for our son's progress. And as far as her communication with us, I mean, she would call us weekly at home and email four and five times a week just to say how he was doing and that he's, you know, progressing fine, his math is, you know, off the charts, and I know you can't base it all on one child, but all the other parents seem to, well, most of them anyway, seem to be in consensus that their kids are doing fairly well. And, you know, I understand through legality, red tape, unions, so on and so forth, that some things can't be divulged at this time. However, I would say it was more the manner in which it was handled, and I don't know on what planet you inform five-year-olds before their parents that something like this is happening and just kind of send them home with a note this long.
And a psychologist?
Yeah, I mean, you know, and just, there have been many things. I'm not going to get up here and bash people in the school and so on and so forth, but there was a lot of what I thought to be unprofessional behavior, and I would definitely like to have it looked at, and whether or not it's a reinstatement or not, you know, obviously there are many things to be handled, but the way it was handled in our eye, and we were pretty unimpressed with our first go-around and what you hope to achieve by taking someone out with 12 weeks left of the school year, and are you going to cram a bunch of kindergartners for the last 12 weeks like it's finals week and hope it turns out all okay? I really don't understand. Not an education professional, but I know poorly handled situations when I see them. So, I don't know if you have anything to add. Thank you very much.
I do know that she would love her job back if given the chance, she told me. So, hopefully, you guys can reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Welch? Yeah, I thought about calling him Dick Welch, but I thought he wrote Richard here, so...
That's my God-given name, Richard Welch, 8 R. Lane. Although I'd like to be able to take a lot of credit for the results in the audit report, seeing as I was on the committee for four years, it seems that history keeps on repeating itself when it comes to the audit report in that you end up getting a clean slate with no condescending remarks, which kind of comes as a surprise to me when we have certain people who constantly come in front of both the town council and the school committee and berate the administration and its way of handling its books, et cetera. I didn't know what to expect with the new auditor, seeing as the old auditor had been around for a number of years. There was a good chance that the new auditor wasn't going to keep on making the same errors over and over again in their review, but it turned out that, I guess, the old auditor and the new auditor came up with the same information, that there are issues on the town side that don't exist on the school side. So, I'd like to say again, the school committee, the school administration has done an excellent job for the town, worked very hard, and I can take partial credit on that, on trying to become more efficient and saving taxpayer money. And just, my only message to you is keep up the good work, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone who else who's come here to speak at Citizens' Comments who didn't sign up? Point up, Chris.
Chris Mendoian, 70, Spring Road. I just want a couple of quick comments. Dr. Ojai, thank you for throwing out the comment about the Booster Club. I saw you all reaching down for your pens and PDAs to put the date in, but it's actually Saturday, March 23rd. I thought you said 24. So, there are tickets still available if you'd like to come out and support NK Booster Club and the athletic programs. And just a couple of other quick notes. You read most of them. I just know because I tweet about them, so @NKBoosterClub if you're looking for some information. But Zach Emrick was another outstanding individual who not only won at the Rhode Island, but he actually won the New England 600, and in doing so set a Rhode Island state record. So, I figured we'd throw that out there to him as well. So, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, everyone. That brings us into superintendent's report.
I'm just going to be brief. I just want people to know that if these are topics that are of interest to you, Chris, I know one of these will be for you. We are, in the next few weeks, I plan on making a presentation to the school committee on the 26th about the future use of Davisville Elementary School, and on April 9, I plan on having presentations about the NK Foundation, a private group put together to help with funding, particularly around business partnerships for the district, and to look, to open a discussion and include our athletic director about, you know, a new approach to athletics funding. That will be on April 9 as well.
I think it's on the 26th that we're inviting a number of the first-place people, the gymnastics team, just to let folks know, anyone who had a first-place state in the state or something. So, all right. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. So, are there items that people would like to exempt from the consent agenda? Yes, Mr. Jones?
I would like to exempt D6, but mainly for comment, not on a particular issue.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, move.
Second. All right, so all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Jones, item D6.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. My point on D6 is, again, not on a specific coach. I would say it's a good trend to keep, you know, seeing our coaches brought before the committee before the season starts, but I'd just like to point out, you know, when you look at the list and you look at the salaries and you sort of start to scratch your head, you know, why one coach of a same position might make different from another, or the girls' teams or the boys' teams, and whether baseball is comparable to softball, that I just encourage the administration, and I know there's an effort ongoing about this, but that we streamline the co-curricular and extracurricular stipend system and move it away from sort of a confusing formula system that might lend itself to both gender inequities and other sort of distortions, and move to a much simpler system that seems to be used by far more of the districts in the state that also can allow for a much more fair and equitable way of paying coaches, of assigning coaches, and keeping a healthy balance with also market competitive rates.
I agree completely with Mr. Jones on this one. That is exactly the philosophy I'm approaching this presentation on April 9, and some of these items are going to be part of negotiation with teachers, but some of these things we can probably do unilaterally as well. So, I'm looking for the same kinds of things, streamlining it, making it, simplifying it more equitable, and in the process, finding ways to save some money and fully fund all of the teams that we have running, or to get to a point where if there is some fundraising to be done by particular teams, that all of the burden isn't on just a couple of particular teams.
Mr. Cerisi and Mr. Mudge.
I'll defer to Mr. Mudge.
Mr. Mudge?
I was going to make a motion to approve D6, and we can certainly have more discussion on it. Mr. Mudge wishes.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Mr. Mudge?
Yeah. Dr. Ojai, I wish you, in your evaluation, paid, you know, particular attention to the difference between co-curricular and extracurricular funding. Extracurricular being defined by at least the federal government is that where town money, town funds are being used to basically pay for the program, and it is a responsibility, it's placed really, we place it on the taxpayers' shoulders. The co-curricular are supposed to be those type of funds that are set up for the benefit of the kids, like a walking club, a math club, and so forth and so on. Now, there's a fine difference there, but it is also supposed to be a type of investment that is self-sustaining. It doesn't take, or shouldn't take, as I understand the regulations, of funding by the local community. So, I wish you'd look at that issue, and I think you can look at the federal guidelines put out by the Department of Education, because quite frankly, I was interested in some of the list that we had in here, like we have a walking club, and we have some other clubs, and I'm saying, gee, you know, that's a heck of a lot of, you know, clubs we're having, and we're paying for somebody to provide guidance in a walking club? I don't know what a walking club, but nonetheless, we need to take a good look at that. So, I'd like to get some clear definition between the responsibilities of the taxpayers' programs and those of the, of what I believe is the co-curricular falls under the self-supporting rule. If you could adjust that, I'd appreciate it. Next, when you give your presentation.
Mrs. Avanzano.
Yeah, I don't know regarding the distinction of funding on those issues, but just to speak briefly to the walking club, we offer a lot of clubs at our high school, and a lot of children that are not involved in athletics participate in these clubs. There are kids who are, you know, ill and recovering from something, or they're not runners, and they're getting out there and walking, and they walk around Whitford together with a teacher and get exercise that way. And, I mean, it's just another activity for the kids after school that is, you know, very beneficial, and we have a lot of those different activities. They're all funded in that one line, budget line. It's just another option for the kids after school if they're not participating in structured athletics. I think we need to make sure we don't forget, a lot of kids do not participate in structured athletics and need other opportunities. Thank you.
Mr. Biscardis?
I just want to thank Dr. Ojai. He knows all too well how I feel about approving coaches, because the season's already in play. And I think this, you know, once the component of the stipends for them is cleared up, I think it's going to even make, you know, it'll make your job a lot easier. So, thank you for doing that. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, seeing there's no other questions, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Do we need to take a roll call vote, or is this? Okay, so all those in favor of approving D6, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us to unfinished business and to administrator contracts. Dr. Ojai, would you like to start this conversation?
Sure. On your agenda is a list of six administrators whose contracts are coming up for renewal. What I am proposing to the committee tonight is that you accept their renewal per the terms that I have listed to you in executive session, and that you give me an allowance of a total of 0.623% over what has already been budgeted, which is 1%, to allow for a performance-based wage approach in which no administrator would be receiving more than a 2% increase, but their wage increase would be dependent upon their previous performance, as noted in their recent evaluations.
And make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
A second.
All right, I don't know, I see hands up already, so what we can do is we can just go down the table from here. I know we have gone round and round at this table in prior times, Dr. Ojai, in talking about, you've heard the committee say very much if we wanted a performance-based evaluation, and so I think the committee did appreciate that we could take the time where you could explain to us how each person was a little bit different in their recommendation for the term of their contract, for the amount, and I appreciate you taking that time without... So, Mr. Cerisi?
I'm just going to be very brief and just thank Dr. Ojai for the work that he's put into making these recommendations. I know we've gone round and round on the discussion of this several times, and hopefully we're at a place that everyone's comfortable with, and that's fair and equitable, and we're maintaining some consistency. I do like the fact that we continue on the path that we had started several years ago with performance-based contracts and performance-based pay increases. These particular contracts, the term of the contract and the pay increase or lack of pay increases is tied to performance. That is the direction that we had initiated several years ago, and I hope to continue in that direction, and as we did several years ago with the bargaining units, the NEA and the ESP, I certainly would extend an invitation to them to join us in the discussion of merit pay, or based on performance. The committee and the administration's taken a lot of criticism over the years for pay increases, whether it be merit pay, performance bonus, whatever you want to term it, but pay increases or lack of pay increases based on performance... pay increases or lack of pay increases based on performance and not just because is the direction that we've gone in, and I'd like to see us expand that as well. So it's certainly, the door is open to entertain those discussions during contract negotiations with the bargaining units as well, as it has been for the last several times we've had these discussions. Thank you.
Mr. Biscardin.
Thank you, Ms. Page. I just, I would like to thank Dr. O'Shea for a really comprehensive plan. This wasn't just slapped together to appease the school committee. There was a lot of thought and effort put into this, and I commend you. I think that's, it's a great first step. It's a, it's a super way to show that we are willing to reward people for performance, and it's, it's not just lip service, and as Mr. Serisi said, it's a great example going forward to open up the doors for, to expand this whole program into, into other areas. Thanks again. I, I'm a big proponent of this, and I can tell you that when we talked about it today, it was, it was probably the best news I had all day, and it was the best news again when we talked about it a few minutes ago, so excellent.
Thank you.
Real bold.
It's two compliments in one meeting, Mr. Biscardin. I don't know if I can handle this.
Don't worry, I'm done. I'm all done.
You reached your quota on that. Mrs. Avanzato.
Well, I would also like to say thank you, and I agree completely with the comments that were just made. And we asked for specific criteria and for a real in-depth merit evaluation of employees, and that's what we got. And you developed actual criteria for us that you were using. We were able to see that, and it's very appreciated, the work that was put into it. I know, you know, the state, a couple of years ago, when Deborah Gist first got here, she was headed in this direction with teacher pay, and, you know, we sort of charged into the breach in North Kingston and immediately wanted to do that with administrators to set that, because we thought the state was going, but we turned around and no one was behind us, so the state was gone. So they've kind of fallen off the wagon with it, but it may come to pass, but I think it's definitely the right direction, and we can, we can at least do this. So I think it's a good thing. Our administrators have taken zero pay increases for multiple years running, and I just want to make sure we get that on the record, because that needs to be remembered. They have made that sacrifice. We also increased their co-pay at the same time, so they went backwards, at least for a year or two for most of them. So just wanted to say that. And this also maintains flexibility for the school committee in tough economic times. It's always an option for us to say, look, no one can go anywhere because the economy's going so far backwards, but we're hoping that won't be the case, but that's just a good thing to have the flexibility. So, thank you.
Mrs. Clarkin.
I have to agree with everyone's comments here. I've mentioned in the past that I've always been a proponent of performance-based pay increases, and I think this proposal, it was very thorough, and it's the right direction for the district to move into, and it satisfies, you know, all the concerns that we've had when we've gone around and around this issue. So thank you very much, Dr. O'Shea, for putting it together.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Since, I'm not sure, I just wanted to real quickly, because I didn't get a chance, let folks know, I wanted to thank Principal Logan for, for showing us around the school, and I apologize for being a few minutes late, but I just think it was useful and valuable, especially if you don't have children at this school, to do this, and I commend, you know, the administration and the chair for taking the suggestion to do these and starting to make it a reality. I won't continue because I feel the same way as, as a lot of the comments that have been made. I just think it's important for the community to know that, you know, in the past, you know, it might be a blanket, whether it was zero or one for everybody, that I think it's useful that, like in the private sector, we start to distinguish with our administrators and reward and compensate those who, who are high performers appropriately, and keep in mind that incentive, I think incentivizing that to a degree is useful in the public sector. And so I, again, also thank Dr. O'Shea for, and his staff for the time they've put into this, and I also agree, I think we're headed in the right direction in this sense, and I would agree with Mr. Serisi. I think it sets an example of where the administrators will go, that maybe the, the other employees might want to go there, too.
Thank you. Mr. Mudge?
I agree with most everything that's been echoed here, although I do have some comments or concerns about the, the merit, the pay itself and some of the criteria, but those are things that can be worked out. Nonetheless, I'm going to vote no for this, and not, not against for these folks at all, but in general, I'm not going to support any pay increases for the teachers or anybody else in this, this year, given the economy and everything else that's happened over the last several years, and, and because of the economic issues that we have faced over the years. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. We have a motion on, on the table and a second, so Lorraine, if we could take a roll call vote, please. Linda Avanzato?
Yes.
Don Biscardin?
Yes.
Larry Serisi?
Yes.
Cheryl Clarkin?
Yes.
Robert Jones?
Yes.
William Mudge?
No.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, six, one. Thank you. All right, that leads us into the policy discussion. We have two policies that are being amended here today. I'll start with the first one, policy ACE. This was written by Katie, I started to say McAllister, but she was Duncan's son after she got married. And, and she wrote these a couple of months ago after a long wait, in that these were policies we had asked to have amended about five years ago, and we were waiting on the Human Rights Commission to come down with their ruling, and we have had more than one special education director who said, is it ready yet? And our attorney had told us no. So the only thing I would say is that on policy ACE, I noticed, or not, I did not notice, I can't take any credit, in our policy meeting, Karen Nuttini noticed that there were three typos, and so I would ask that we approve the, the, the policy with the typos corrected. The first one is on the first page, first paragraph, in that district has the quotation marks on the wrong side of the parentheses. On the second page, there is a, the top paragraph, after safeguards, there's a period, there should be no period, and also in that first paragraph, it says IDEAIA, and it should only say IDEA.
So move.
Second.
So I, I should have gotten the, the changes out to everyone, but I realized this afternoon that I hadn't done that, so I sent them to Lorraine, and I said that I would just make them here on the stage. So are there any questions about this policy? All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the next one is an affirmative action policy, and again, Katie Duncanson wrote this, too, and so I'm, and this was fine, there was no amendments that needed to be made after we've discussed it twice in the policy committee. So I would make a motion that, again, we approve policy AC for affirmative action.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And then as we've adopted these two new policies, we need to get rid of some old charts that we had in there that are, one of the charts has nobody who is, is listed, names of people who, none of them work in the district anymore, and they have been updated through the policy. So I would ask that we delete the old ACER, it should be, an ACE chart.
So move.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to new business. Mr. Mudge, you had asked this to be on the agenda for a discussion of receiving a paper packet, and I will say that while this won't be for a vote tonight, anything that comes out of the discussion, we will just start doing. So it's not necessarily a voting matter, but if the committee comes to kind of a consensus that we want to move in this direction, we can do that. If the committee says no, we're going to continue as we've been doing, that's fine. Mr. Mudge, why don't you go ahead and speak for this issue?
Yes, thank you. I would like to have the packets delivered by mail, if nothing else, like we had before, especially when they're, they're very thick and there's a lot of information in there. I one, seem to do better with hard copies and making notes and so forth and so on, and I can keep them for posterity's sake and reference and so forth and so on. But what this really goes back to, it goes back to a, a policy issue that took place two years ago. So the flow of this was, was, I believe, violated the school policy that we, you know, previously had in, in effect. And that goes back to the fact that when this committee was seated two years ago, again, we received the hard copies of the meetings, like has been traditional for the last hundred years, I guess, whenever, how long this thing's been going on. So we continued to have that. The second meeting, or the third meeting, as I recall, in December, all of a sudden, we found out that iPads had come along, and we were going to use now iPads and go electronics. Well, then we found out, after we looked at the iPads, that superintendent at the time, Thornton, had ordered $18,000 worth of iPads without school committee approval, and that somebody had made a decision that we would go to all electronic communications and deliver these packets. And that was inconsistent with the school department policy then, and I believe it still is. It was something that was allowed to go on. In fact, Joe Thompson also felt that he didn't want to use the iPad, and he returned his in favor of hard copy, and of course, Mrs. Benson, the same thing. So since then, almost two years ago, until this past couple of months here, somebody made a decision that we would no longer allow the packets to be delivered, hard copies to the, to the school committee members. So with that, I would remind you that there were, you know, a lot of other issues that, you know, you hate to bring up here, that we're speaking of. First of all, as an elected official, I wasn't required to own an iPad or to have computer service. And what you're saying that, you know, by delivering this, these, the documents the way you do, is that, that I'm required to have internet service. I'm required to have a computer, and you're making that mandatory. And/or if I want a copy, then I have to print it out, you know, at my expense. But those are secondary issues. Fact of the matter is, I'd like to continue to get the hard copies like we have in the past, and which was traditional for at least the last 50 years, or at least the last 10 years. So that's my request.
So let me do a little bit of explaining as to how we got to this, this part. As Mr. Mudge said, in, at the end of the November of 2010 election, Dr. Thornton did purchase iPads for not only the school committee members, but I believe the other administrators within the district. And at that time, how we had been doing our school committee packets was that everything was printed out, and it was delivered to our doorstep by the little minibus that went around. And so the cost was not in the paper, the cost was in the time that it took the clerk, which was not Lorraine at the time, took the clerk to assemble the packets, and the costs came in paying the minibus drivers. And so after he had done an assessment, and I'm really not going to address the whole issue of how he purchased those, but that was, it was viewed as the amount of time that it took per year to pay for that delivery of the packets, and the time of the clerk was more expensive than the iPads.
Who was he?
Dr. Thornton.
Okay, so this all happened before the school committee was seated?
Correct. So when we came, became seated, it was a sort of thing, we were all given iPads, and, and I do know that, I'm aware that Mrs. Benson had some issues with the iPad and did not use it. I believe Mr. Mudge turned his back in, as I remember very clearly the day that Mr. Thompson turned his back in. And at that time, since Mrs., the iPads do require you to have Wi-Fi, and since Mrs. Benson didn't have that, we had to make the decision as to what we were going to do about the packets for Mrs. Benson. And so Dr. Thornton wanted to go very strongly on the computer route, and that was at the same time, the same point that the Rhode Island Association of School Committees was urging everyone to go on a paperless office, too, and that their meetings they would advertise and the different components that were, were available for school committees.
May I ask a question, please?
Let me finish, and then if you want to ask a question.
Yeah, because this is a little more.
And so, so we were with the IQ M2 program, and Dr., while Dr. Thornton was pushing for an all-computerized system, Mr. Welch and I agreed that we thought that Mrs. Benson should continue to see, receive her paper packet. And that was not a, that was not, his first preference was, but Mr. Welch and I stated that we thought it would be better for Mrs. Benson to receive the paper packet rather than the electronic. And since the paper pack was being done for Mrs. Benson, we said, well, then one could be given through Mr. Welch, I mean, for Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Mudge and also Mr. Thompson. We did amend the school policy BE on January 25th, 2011, and in there, we said in BE Section Six, we said, "To ensure proper notice of, to the community and its citizens, each agenda shall be appropriately posted in compliance with Open Meetings Act." And it says in there also that a copy shall be caused to be delivered to each committee member no later than four days preceding the meeting which was prepared. Now, that has been read to mean that the copy you receive is the link that Lorraine sends out to us before each meeting, and that's your delivery of the packet. And that's how I read it, and so when Mrs. Benson went off the committee, it was my effort in looking at all the places that we were looking to cut, it was that surely a means of saving time and money of asking, since we didn't have a non-computer person, and we know everybody who is on here has a computer and uses it, that we would then go to having a, a cheaper system in which Lorraine could then provide a link, and everybody could look at it this way. Obviously, when we have very lengthy items such as the, the budget, we are given it in paper with a recent audit, we were given that in paper, I believe, and we had the transportation audit, that was given in paper. So there are times where we all agree that it is really very long, and it has been given in paper. I have no preference if this committee wants to go down a paper packet. I guess I would say, you know, I'm not going to fight this, but at the same time, I did it as a part of an expediency. If the committee perceives that I have, I, that we should go back and wants to give Mr. Mudge his paper, that is fine, but you need to know, it will take Lorraine's time, and that's what you're paying for. It's not the paper that is the cost, it is the time. So that's, that's what I have to say, and, and I believe it is in keeping with the policy.
May I respond to you, please?
So why don't we just go right down, and, and everybody can have their say.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I really don't want to waste any more of the committee's time on this, or any more of the public's time on this, to be quite honest with you. We have much more important business before the committee and before the school district. That's, I, I'm, hopefully, it's more important to the taxpayers and to the students in North Kingston. I certainly have no objection if any member of this committee wants a paper package. If they want a paper package, give them a paper package. I just want to make it clear that there was no malicious or intent or conspiracy theory intent when members were not receiving paper packages. As Mrs. Page stated, it was just clearly a matter of trying to become more efficient with the use of our labor, our employees, and more efficient with our materials, and, and save a few bucks wherever we, in areas wherever we could. That's all that was behind it, and I'm hoping that this committee really doesn't need to belabor this point tonight. The, the bottom line is this, is, is I don't have any objection, and I really think my colleagues would agree with me. If, if somebody needs a paper package for whatever the reason may be, let them have the paper package. I, I just want to make, be clear on what the committee's intent was going into this. So, thank you.
Mr. Biscardin, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief, but I, I have no problem with, I agree with Mr. Serisi. However, what I don't agree with is Mr. Mudge. We all get a stipend. If, if cost is a problem to you, you have a stipend that will offset the cost of paper and ink to print anything that is emailed to you. I do it every- I do it, everybody else does it. The second thing, if you want the packet, fine. I don't think that we should have to mail it to you, I think you should have to come and pick it up, because I can, I suspect that if it gets mailed and something happens in the mail, you would then complain you didn't get, get everything on time. So, um, those are two things I'd like to bring up. Get a stipend to cover any cost to print anything that's emailed to you, and you should have to pick it up.
Mrs. Avanzato.
Uh, yeah, I do not have a problem with any member who prefers to get a paper packet. I think it should be, try to be avoided because it's a cost to, to the taxpayers, but I think if someone really prefers it, I don't have a problem with it. But I want to say, I think the changes that were made by the committee and by the chair were appropriate, um, and were made trying to save funds. There were demands made that we keep, um, delivering by bus. We can't do that. That was a complete misuse, actually, we finally woke up to that had been happening for thirty years, that we changed in an appropriate way, I think. So, I don't have a problem, I just, I think we need to not discuss this for fif- this is a ridiculous waste of the committee's time, to be honest with you, but, I mean, I can understand a member asking for an issue to be on the agenda, but to discuss this for everyone's time for a half an hour is just beyond what it should be. Thank you.
I agree. The only thing I, I would say is that if any, but, any member would want a paper packet, it's their responsibility to go and pick it up, because we shouldn't be paying for any type of delivery charge.
Mr. Jones.
I have no comments.
Mr. Mudge, did you have anything more to say?
Well, see, the issue about this is certainly, I, we work better with the packets, okay? But just like the town council gets the packets delivered to them, that was never a problem. In fact, the police dropped, dropped them off, and the minibus drivers came. But the issue was, the school committee, until tonight, has never discussed this, never discussed this. You made a unilateral, uh, that, excuse me, Mr. Welch made a unilateral decision back in December, okay, to use the iPads. The school committee didn't make a decision, and then we say, we're going to deliver this in, in Jan-, June eleventh, January eleventh? That was never voted on to say that we're not going to deliver.
But the policy is.
Okay? The policy, the policy didn't change then. The policy was the very same it was the previous year. It had not changed. The policy didn't change until the following May. Okay? May I finish, Mr. Cerisi?
Point of order.
Okay? So, it's, and I appreciate, Miss, Miss.
Okay, just let Mr. Cerisi say.
Well, how about let me finish, please?
Let Mr. Cerisi stay.
Please, Mr. Cerisi, I please finish.
Madam Chair.
All right, please, finish.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, thank you. We're getting way off topic here, and obviously there's some underlying personal issue that I, I really don't think this is the appropriate forum for. I think that Mr. Mudge has requested a paper package. I think what we've heard from a consensus of the committee here tonight is nobody's opposed to that, that just so the district doesn't incur any additional cost, that anyone requesting a paper package be required to, to pick it up. I think we've heard loud and clear from the committee, I think the issue's been resolved. I think any further discussion is belaboring the point and really a waste of everyone's time, and it's personal in nature, and, and if there's a personal conversation to be had, the, the members that are involved in that personal conversation can certainly have it on their own time and not on the committee's time or the public's time.
It sounds like the, the committee has said.
Understand. Could I finish, Mike, please?
It sounds like the committee has said that you'll be able to pick up a paper packet at the administrative office. So, if that, if that is what you would prefer, you may pick up your packet that way.
All I'm trying to say is, there were unilateral decisions made, okay, without the committee making any decisions at all.
You made your point.
Any decisions at all, several times, okay? And that's the issue.
I think those are ministerial in nature that are in the chair's purview, some of those decisions.
No, no, they're not. No. It was in our policy, and we weren't following our policy, and certain people didn't want to follow the policy, so they just shut down the process, okay? So, it's not whether I get it or not, it's something else, it's why wouldn't we, why weren't we following the policy?
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. All right, so, we have, um, that has been now discussed. We have our financial reports on here, and unfortunately, Mrs. King is ill tonight, so she, um, that brings us to the end of our meeting, um, but we have executive session next, and so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We will be in executive session.